First, 2022 Meeting of the Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals to Order. Would you please call the roll? Here. Yeah. Present. Here. Okay. The next subject is the approval of the previous minutes of the August 8th, 2022 meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Were there any petitions that went through the county board last month? So we don't have that motion to adjourn us due to that. Thank you. The next thing is old business. We have two petitions that have been continued on for status update on October the 6th. Petition 22-P-1593 and petition 22-P-1594. And then we have petition 22-P-1596, petitioner Sherry Gassidge, permanent parcel number 11-16-09-0 or 100-012. Lee Township petitioner was requesting an appeal. The zoning administrator's final decision and determination of a zoning violation dated July 12th, 2022. Dee, would you like to bring us up to date?
Gassidge has come to. The petitioner Sherry Gassidge has come to an agreement with the zoning administrator to remove one of her campers from her property to come into compliance with the Lee County Code and has withdrawn her petition.
So with the petition being withdrawn, we don't have to vote on that? Do we need to vote on the petition being withdrawn? So we're past that. Moving on to new business. Petition number 22-P-1595, petitioner Meadow Solar LLC, permanent parcel number 0702-28-200-004. Dixon Township is requesting special use for the construction of a solar energy system. And with that, we will now convene that public hearing as to the Meadow Solar petition, special use. First, however, under our rules, this body is permitted to engage the services and of an independently contracted facilitator to conduct these proceedings. I will now entertain a motion to engage retired Judge Tim Slaven as the facilitator for the evidentiary argument, in fact, finding phases of this hearing.
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I will now turn the hearing over to that facilitator, Judge Slaven.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the ZBA. It's wonderful to see all of you again. And to those of you here in the courtroom and perhaps on Zoom, welcome and good evening. I hope everyone's healthy and remaining safe. My name is Tim Slaven. I'm a retired circuit judge engaged as, now engaged as an independent contractor to what is called facilitate this hearing. I have no adjudicatory responsibilities. I am not for or against any particular position. I am a neutral. I am here, however, hopefully to add some process, organization, efficiency, and flow to these proceedings. This is indeed Meadow Solar LLC's petition, Lee County number 22P-1595 for a special use permit to develop a proposed solar energy system, acronym that we use as SES in Dixon Township here in Lee County. As shown by certificates of publication, notice this hearing was published in the Dixon Telegraph on August 9th, 2022. The same notices were stat, the same statutory required notices were sent by United States First Class Post to owners whose property would adjoin the proposed project boundary. First of all, hoping you understand, a portion of what remains of tonight's zoning board of appeals session will probably be taken up by organizational matters as we set some ground rules and do supplementary scheduling. Initially, as opposed to some of the previous hearings over the last couple of years, there are no longer any mandated COVID relating masking or social distancing requirements. That does not, however, mean any of us should not be sensitive to possible risks to and fears of our friends, neighbors, and fellow attendees. As such, I simply encourage all to wear a mask, maintain social distancing when practical, and certainly be respectful of others' desires to do so. I hope this all feels, makes everyone feel comfortable. If not, one can also participate from your home business or other remote location on the Zoom video conferencing platform or while not being able to participate, one can also watch and listen on YouTube. The Zoom meeting ID is and will remain throughout this hearing, 915-3923-9154. And the password is 209840. That meeting, meeting ID and password will remain the same throughout the hearing. The Zoom platform allows an interested party to actually participate. It is interactive. One may not only see and hear what is taking place, but when the appropriate stage comes, one may ask a witness questions, call a witness, testify, or give a closing comment. Further, in an attempt to be as transparent and inclusive as possible, we are also streaming this proceeding on YouTube. However, YouTube is not an interactive platform. On it, one can only watch and hear what is being done and said during the hearing, but cannot participate. As to YouTube, on your computer or cell phone, use your browser, go to www.youtube.com. In the search bar, type Lee County IL, I L, IL, for Illinois, zoning board of appeals. There's no need to be concerned with upper or lowercase letters. This should bring up a list of Lee County ZBA Youtubes. Input or select the date. Presumably, if you want to watch tonight, September 1st, 2022. And voila, you should be seeing us here, seeing us and hearing us here in the, in the hearing room. In case you are not a techno geek, for assistance with any of these things, you may call Ms. Duffy's hotline, 815-973-3449. Okay, now for a bit more substance. There are two general groups of attendees as this zoning board of appeals hearing moves forward. One bunch I refer to as necessaries. These are people who must, as a practical matter, attend this hearing in person. They consist of your hardworking, practically volunteer zoning board of appeals members, Ms. Duffy, your county's outstanding zoning, zoning officer, her alternative energy coordinator known as AEC, Alice, petitioner's attorney Courtney Kennedy, your Detroit State's attorney Charlie Boonstra, and at any given time, of course, a witness, myself, and finally, but hardly least, our hardworking and skilled court reporter, Callie. The other group of folks I will, I will call interested parties. These are those of you folks who are either with us in the building or more remotely on Zoom or YouTube because you simply want to observe your county government at work or beyond that, you have some particular interest in these proceedings. The next process I will try to explain is the process for these interested parties to participate. I emphasize, please, please, everyone will have an opportunity for everyone's benefit, and I want the opportunity to participate, and I want everyone to have the opportunity to participate in a manner that is orderly and as efficient as possible. However, because of the necessary electronic filtering, my usual process becomes even more central, and I will try to flesh out more of this further in my presentation. There are many possible reasons for an interested party to appear this evening and during subsequent sessions, whether in person or remotely. You could be a member of the public who is joining us simply as a citizen and spectator. You could be a member of the public who wants to be heard. This does not necessarily mean someone who is absolutely for or absolutely against the requested special use, but someone who wants to participate. If you are such a person, you will fall into any one or more three subcategories. One, you want to give testimony. This means you desire, under oath, to have you or a witness of your calling to testify to facts relevant to the board's eventual decision. Such is not the time to describe your feelings or announce your opinion, but to aver facts, and you are subject to cross-examination. Everyone so wishing to testify will be given one opportunity to do so. Two, you could be here because you want to cross-examine witnesses. But please, please, that is just the time for questions of a particular witness, not to argue with him or her. Everyone wishing to cross-examine will be given one opportunity to cross-examine each and every witness. The third reason you may appear is because you want to make a closing statement or a public comment. That is your opportunity to give a speech, to tell the board how you feel or give them your opinion based on the facts adduced during the whole hearing process as to what their decision should be. During this closing statement or speech stage, one can, a person cannot allege new facts. When you think about it, the reason for that is very simple. The two most important parts of adducing the truth or facts of matters at a hearing are missing in the closing statement stage because a person is not under oath, nor is one subject to cross-examination. Everyone so wishing to give a closing statement will be given one opportunity to do so. For those of us joining us, for those of you joining us on Zoom this evening or in the future, that interactive software allows an interested party to indicate a desire when the time comes to ask questions, to present one's own witness, to testify oneself, or to give a closing argument or closing statement. So when I indicate that the time has come to begin one of those interested party stages, I will ask for participation from the Zoomers. If one is video conferencing, meaning you've got, you've got, you can not only hear us but see us as well, simply click on the icon at the bottom center of the Zoom screen. That icon is labeled participants. Some options will appear. Click raise hand. We then should see your raised hand here on our end. If one is remotely teleconferencing, I know where the, in other words, just using your phone and not video, while remaining connected, you should hit the star or asterisk symbol and then the Roman numeral nine on your phone. I said Roman numeral, Arabic numeral, number nine on your phone. You should also then see any raised hands under that option as well. However, I won't be able to call on folks on a first raised, first come basis because I can't see the screen. So calling on raised hands will probably be by random, referring by, referring to people by name, email address, or even the last four digits of their phone number that does appear on the display. Also, written communications sent in advance of this hearing are subject to board rule, Article 5, Section 12, that eight copies be provided in advance. Any communications received that do not comply with this requirement may not be considered by the board. I will now review the chronological progress of the hearing. I know this narration is really boring and tedious, but please, reciting it is for everyone to help you feel comfortable and not worry that you will not have a fair and complete opportunity to participate. But at the same time, to alert you when three distinct opportunity forms of participation will present. The applicant Meadow Solar LLC has the burden of initially going forward. Accordingly, its agent or attorney may first make opening remarks. Then the applicant presents its evidence, one witness or document at a time. I will place each witness under oath or affirmation. After each applicant witness, the state's attorney, the zoning officer, the alternative energy coordinator, members of the ZBA first, and then interested parties, both onsite and remote, have the opportunity to cross-examine. But please, please, that is time for questions only, just questions directed to the witness testifying. After the applicant's evidence, the zoning officer has the opportunity to present witnesses and documents. I will place any of her witnesses under oath or affirmation. After the direct examination of any zoning officer witness, first the petitioner, then the state's attorney, then members of the ZBA, and then interested parties, both onsite and remote, have the opportunity to cross-examine. And once again, please, that is just time for questions directed to the witness testifying. After the applicant and zoning officer have presented their respective evidence, then, then interested parties may present their evidence, one witness, including themselves, or document at a time. I will place each such witness or interested party under oath or affirmation. After each interested party testifies, the applicant, the state's attorney, the zoning officer, members of the ZBA, the alternative energy coordinator, and other interested parties have the opportunity to cross-examine. Then, and the, in the applicant does have the opportunity to offer rebuttal witnesses or documents one at a time. And we will go through the same process and around the horn again. If, however, the applicant does not present any rebuttal evidence, then, then the evidentiary part of the hearing will be concluded. Finally, the applicant is given the initial opportunity for closing remarks, and then any interested parties will also be given the same opportunity for closing statements, public comments, or speeches, whichever term you prefer. Please understand, all of this is simply a process designed to give all a chance to be heard and, but in a thorough, orderly fashion. There are some minor sub-rules, after which I promise I will be finished boring you any further. Each session of the ZBA has a time limit under their rules of two and a half hours. However, we certainly don't want to cut off anyone right in the middle of something, so I will certainly make a reasonable effort to let someone finish a particular stage when the time limit has been reached. Or if there's very little time remaining at the end of a stage, I may simply continue the session rather than starting on another stage. I also have, for everyone's benefit, including ours, the the discretion to call for short recesses throughout the hearing process. Under the zoning board's rules, I have the duty to rule on admissibility of evidence. While strict judicial rules of evidence do not apply in here, I will exercise some equitable control of what is being presented with or without an objection. We do, and we will continue to have a court reporter here taking down what is said during the proceedings. I ask all to be mindful of her job. She cannot take down two people talking at once. She cannot take down nodding heads or gestures. And while I know how very skilled she is, there is a limit to how fast a person can talk, including me, and expect her to keep up. I do please ask for civility and decorum. This is certainly a public forum, but please be respectful of all who consider it important enough to be here. I ask to refrain from displays of approval or disapproval. And as nowadays, as with all public gatherings, I request you either turn your cell phone off or at least put it on silent. Lastly, your zoning board of appeals, these fine, hardworking, and practically volunteer gentlemen, act as finders of fact, much akin to a jury in a courtroom. In that role, their decisions during the last stage of the proceeding, findings, the findings of fact and recommendations are based on the sworn testimony, submitted exhibits, and statements they received during the hearing process. These gentlemen are your friends, they're your neighbors, they're your fellow citizens of Lee County. So please, appreciate and respect their role as we move through the, through the days ahead. I ask you not to put them in a compromised position by lobbying them or having extra hearing conversations or correspondence until the higher, excuse me, till the entire hearing, including their decision, has been completed. In fact, they have been instructed to avoid the appearance of impropriety by politely telling an interested party something like, I'm sorry, but I'm not allowed to discuss the matter until the ZBA's work of finding facts and making recommendations is completed. Thank you all for your kind understanding in all of these regards. All right. Now, to some of the scheduling stuff. First, I note, I like to keep a record of the appearance of folks, the presence, as we've already indicated, of ZBA members, Forester, Hughes, Pratt, Meyer. Ms. Duffy is here, Ms. Henkel, the alternative energy coordinator is here. The state's attorney Charlie Boonstra is here. Courtney Kennedy is present in the courtroom representing her client Meadow Solar LLC. Along with three petitioners reps. Lee County IT specialist Jonathan is present, helping us with all the electronic stuff. Court reporter is present. Of course, I'm present. That makes 14 necessaries in person. I believe I see two interested parties in the courtroom, and there are two on Zoom. All right, ZBA members and Ms. Henkel and Ms. Duffy and Ms. Kennedy. Yes.
Actually, we're free up on Zoom, and one of those, I believe, is Mr. Burrow.
Oh. Okay, great. Thank you. I can't see the screen, but thanks, thanks. Okay. Burrow's present. Okay, that makes 20 altogether attendees, including Mr. Burrow. All right. So everybody get out your calendars, because you know what's next.
All right, the of course, I've cut out the days that I'm not available, so I'm going to start asking about when everyone is available, and I'm going to start with Wednesday, the 7th of September. So what's that, about six days from now? Ms. Duffy, as far as you know, the courtroom available? Mr. Forester? Mr. Burrow? Craig, can you hear me?
Done mute.
Are you on mute on your end, Craig Burrow? He's got it. If you're on, Craig, if you can hear me, you have to take yourself off mute to be able to be heard. Does he appear to recognize him? Making noise at him? Oh. All right, well, Mr. Pratt? Mr. Hughes?
No.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Well, can't, that's, that's out. We don't have a forum.
What time are we talking about?
Seven, I'm sorry, seven.
Craig is no longer muted.
Mr. Burrow, I'm going through dates, available dates. Are you available on Wednesday, the 7th at 7 o'clock?
Yes, hear me?
Yeah, I do. Okay, well, then you've become important. Ms. Duffy? Ms. Henkel? Mr. Boonstra? Ms. Kennedy? And your, when I say you, including your, your clients' representatives. Okay. Kelly? Jonathan? And I am, okay. Thursday, the 8th, courtroom, Ms. Duffy? And you, Ms. Duffy? Mr. Forester? Mr. Burrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pratt? Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Henkel? Mr. Boonstra? Ms. Kennedy, you and yours? Kelly? Jonathan? And I am as well. I'm gonna go through four. Friday, the 9th, I know that really makes everybody thrilled. How about the courtroom, Ms. Duffy? Mr. Forester? Mr. Burrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pratt? Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Duffy? Hello? Ms. Duffy? Ms. Henkel? Mr. Boonstra? Ms. Kennedy, you and yours? Kelly? Jonathan? Okay, one more. Monday, the 12th. Courtroom, Ms. Duffy? You, Ms. Duffy? Mr. Forester? Mr. Burrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pratt?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Henkel? Mr. Boonstra? Ms. Kennedy? Kelly? Jonathan? Okay, so, and I always try to phrase it this way, and I hope everybody understands what I mean. Those are available dates. They are not necessarily the dates we're, we're going to continue things to, because we don't know how fast we're, we're going to be going and so forth, so the available dates are September 7th, 8th, 9th, and 12th. Okay. With that having been covered, I think I will turn to you, Ms. Kennedy, and say you may proceed. Oh, they're sitting right in front of me. Okay, well, welcome. Pleasure to meet you. Okay, how about you on these dates? I'm gonna bug you. We'll get you to talk right away. Are you available Wednesday, September 7th at 7 o'clock?
Yeah, I'm available Wednesday, Thursday, not Friday.
And Monday? 12th.
And I'm available Monday as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, welcome. All right, now, that little.
Thank you, Judge. For those of you who are new or participating virtually by Zoom, my name is Courtney Kennedy, and I serve as local counsel for the applicant, in this case Meadow Solar LLC. As Judge noted, the applicant has filed a second amended petition for special use permit and variance requests with the Lee County zoning office, asking that it be approved to construct, maintain, and operate a five-megawatt AC solar farm on approximately 24 acres of land situated in Dixon Township here in Lee County, Illinois. This project is not a utility scale project, but rather is a community solar project. So for me, that invites the question, what is a community scale project? Community solar allows residents, small businesses, organizations, municipalities, and others to receive credit on their electricity bills for the power produced from their portion of a solar array, offsetting their electricity costs. They are usually five megawatts or less of electrical capacity and allow for equal access to the economic and environmental benefits of solar energy generation. This project is brought specifically in partnership with the Dixon Park District at the Meadows Park and would provide various utility bill savings to families and organizations in this area so that those near the project would receive a benefit of being in proximity to the site. In addition, the project would generate rent payments to the Dixon Park District, increase property taxes to the county, which would flow to the Dixon School District, among other entities, and utility bill savings directly to the Park District. Throughout the course of this hearing, you'll hear from Dustin Elliott, Director of Legal and Corporate Affairs and co-developer for this project. Mr. Elliott will provide you with an overview of the project site, the project's adherence to the Lee County ordinance regulating solar energy systems, the community outreach that Meadow Solar has performed in furtherance of this project. the community outreach that Meadow Solar has performed in furtherance of this project, and the variance requests contained within the second amended petition. You will also hear from Lucas Polly from the Dixon Park District, who will testify regarding the partnership between the Park District and Meadow Solar LLC. With respect to its variance request, Meadow Solar has requested two variants. The first one relates to the screening requirements as set forth in section D one K of the solar ordinance. As you will see, the solar project will be located on a uniquely shaped parcel of land that is comprised of approximately six hundred and nine acres. The solar ordinance as written requires the applicant to provide a visual screen, or in the alternative, a one-time payment to any non-participating dwellings adjacent to the solar energy system. Because of the size of the proposed project site and the shape of the project parcel, Meadow Solar respectfully requests to provide the screening options around the twenty-four acre project site. Through Mr. Elliott's testimony, he will outline the plans for this vegetative screening requirement. To require the applicant to provide screening options to all adjacent landowners to the project parcel, that whole six hundred and nine acre parcel, um, would present practical difficulties and undue hardship to the applicant. In addition, we believe that the strict application of the screening requirements as set forth in the solar ordinance frustrates the overall intent of the solar ordinance itself. The second variance request relates to the setbacks with the Jack Mabley Development Center. In the current solar ordinance, it requires that the solar project be set back a minimum of four hundred feet from the foundation of any adjacent non-participating primary dwelling. Here, the applicant respectfully requests that the solar project be set back approximately two hundred twenty-five feet from the foundation of the center. As the current setback requirement again imposes a practical difficulty and undue hardship to the applicant. In furtherance of its request, Meadow Solar is in the process of obtaining a waiver of the setback requirement from the center. It's engaged in various discussions with the local representatives from the center and is in the process of obtaining a waiver from the state of Illinois. In furtherance of this request, we would condition that, that variance request on obtaining a waiver from the state of Illinois. At the conclusion of this hearing, and after careful consideration of all the evidence and testimony presented before you, it is my hope that you will agree with me that the project as proposed meets the requirements as set forth in the Lee County ordinance for solar energy systems, and meets all the general requirements for the issuance of a special use permit. Therefore, at the conclusion of this hearing, we respectfully request that you recommend this project to the county board, and that you also recommend the two variance requests. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Um, I have one quick observation, and, and before I even say it, the, the last thing I can do is tell anyone what what words to use, how to testify, um, I'm not putting words in their mouth. But because of the confusion, I'm just suggesting, nobody's held to it, that when we talk about the two pieces, the bigger one, wha- what if we call that the project parcel?
Okay.
And the smaller one, the leasehold area, just so we all don't get sort of because obviously I read their application and, 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 um, I, I understand, but it takes a while to grasp the
Sure.
project parcel and leasehold area, just so we all can be talking about the same thing, but you don't have to, I'm just suggesting. Okay, you may call your first witness.
Thank you. I'd like to call Dustin Elliott.
Uh, Mr. Elliott, want to raise your hand? You solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Have a seat.
Judge, is a general housekeeping matter, at first, I'm going to tender a copy, um, of the form notice of public hearing that was sent out um, by regular mail, or by first-class certified mail return receipt requested to all adjacent landowners to the project parcel. I've also included the certificate of publication in here as well.
Okay, we'll call that what, Fisher one? And did you give that, uh, notice hearing and certificate of public?
I did, yes.
The pink, lady in pink over there? So what Ms. Kennedy has handed out, which is titled Meadow Solar ZBA Presentation, Lee County, September twenty twenty-two, I will mark as exhibit two.
Thank you, Judge. May I proceed?
Please.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Dustin Elliott.
Could you please spell your last name?
E L L I O T T.
And tell us a little bit about your background, Mr. Elliott.
So I went to University of Georgia for my bachelor's and master's degree, and then went to the University of Virginia School of Law for my law degree. And I have been, uh, developing solar projects since then, both as a private practice attorney and now as a um, in-house attorney at Trajectory Energy Partners LLC.
And tell us a little bit about Trajectory Energy Partners.
So Trajectory is an Illinois-based clean energy developer. Um, we have been developing community energy solar projects since two thousand seventeen with the initial passage of Illinois's, um, renewable energy legislation. Uh, since then, we have expanded into other types of solar projects, but our bread and butter is still community solar projects. Our emphasis is on developing projects with strong local support and making sure that we have stakeholder involvement at the local level.
And can you describe what you do specifically with Trajectory?
Yes, I am the Director of Legal and Corporate Affairs at Trajectory, which means I deal with the day-to-day legal and policy issues of the company, which entails everything from negotiating lease agreements with entities like the Dixon Park District to putting together permit applications like we're talking about today, to dealing with everything in between, um, that comes up as it relates to legal and policy issues with the company across our various portfolios and markets.
And are you familiar with the applicant in this case, uh, Meadow Solar LLC?
Yes, I personally negotiated the site lease agreement with Dixon Park District and put together the special use permit petition that you have before you today.
And how does the applicant or Meadow Solar LLC, how does that relate to Trajectory Energy Partners?
Meadow Solar LLC is wholly and indirectly owned by Trajectory Energy Partners LLC.
And with respect to this petition that's pending before the zoning board of appeals, Meadow Solar is acting for and on behalf of itself, is that correct?
Correct.
And aside from this project, do you have any experience developing other solar energy projects?
Yes, Trajectory has been developing community solar projects, like I said, since two thousand seventeen. Um, primarily at that time, it was community solar projects. We have ex- since expanded to develop utility scale projects as well. Um, we have, now have, um, several projects that are operational. We have several projects that are financed and have revenue contracts in place, and we expect to start construction next year. Um, prior to me joining Trajectory in the spring of twenty twenty, I developed clean energy projects across the US as a private practice, energy and environmental attorney.
So can you briefly tell us the difference between a community solar project versus a utility scale project?
Yes, community solar projects, they don't have to be, but they're typically smaller than utility scale projects. So community solar projects, particularly in Illinois, are somewhere between, usually between two megawatts and five megawatts. This is, we're proposing a five-megawatt system here. Um, so the size is different. Utility scale projects, by contrast, are often much larger. They can be hundreds, sometimes thousands of acres, uh, hundreds of megawatts sometimes in terms of size of the project. So the size of the projects typically varies in that regard. The method of interconnection, um, between the two types of project is, is also different. Community solar projects interconnect to the dis- distribution grid, which is controlled directly by the utility, AMR or COMED, depending on the location within the state. Utility scale projects connect to the much larger, higher voltage transmission lines. So the method of interconnection is also different. The way the power is purchased is also different for community solar projects versus utility scale projects. As Courtney was explaining in her, um, opening, community solar projects offer opportunities to local resi- residents, businesses, entities to subscribe directly to the power produced by the project, to subscribe to the project and obtain the electricity bill savings from those projects. Um, utility scale projects, it varies from project to project, but they are typically selling their power to larger corporate off-takers or directly to utilities. Um, so that's, that's another method that the projects differ.
And, and this project is situated on, on the project parcel that is six hundred and nine acres in size, is that correct?
Correct.
And how large is the actual leasehold area?
Approximately twenty-four acres.
And, and you've touched on that this is developed in partnership with the Dixon Park District. Can you expand on that a little more?
Yes, we first started talking to Dwayne Long, the executive director of the Park District, back in September of twenty twenty-one, when we were reaching out to park districts across Illinois to gauge interest in community solar projects. Those conversations progressed throughout the winter, um, on into, uh, the spring and summer of this year, twenty twenty-two, when we firmed up our, our leasehold agreement with the Park District and signed the lease agreement, the memorandum of lease agreement, and the memorandum of understanding with the Park District um, in, in the summer of this year.
And so tell me generally about this project. What does it look like?
So we're proposing a community solar project. It would be approximately twenty-four acres in size, um, approximately five megawatts AC capacity, um, or megawatt size of the project. Um, and it's currently being farmed, so it's agricultural land that, uh, is the current existing use.
And what type of panels are you proposing for this project?
Photovoltaic panels, also commonly known as PV panels.
And are those on a fixed mounting system, or are they tilted?
Yeah, so the, this, we're proposing a fixed system, which is unlike what is sometimes referred to as the single-access tracker systems. So the tracker systems move or tilt in accordance with the sun over the course of the day. Fixed tilt systems are exactly what they sound like. They're fixed. That, we're proposing this to be a fixed tilt system.
And, and how are they fixed to the earth, then?
Uh, so fixed tilt systems and other types of systems, uh, use steel pilings that are driven directly into the ground, typically between eight and twelve feet deep. Um, it depends on the geological conditions of the particular site in question.
And did the applicant provide notice of tonight's hearing to adjacent landowners?
Yes.
And were those adjacent landowners to the project parcel?
Yes.
And, and did the applicant host a community meeting for this proposed project?
Yes, on July eighteenth.
And do you recall where that meeting took place?
Yes, the Wooden Wonderland Shelter uh, off of Washington Avenue.
And do you recall how many attendees showed up to that meeting?
Approximately thirty-five attendees.
At that meeting, did you present a site plan of the proposed project?
Yes, we did.
And did the applicant conduct any community outreach regarding this project?
Yes, so in addition to the community outreach meeting that we held at the, at the shelter on July eighteenth, we reached out directly to the city of Dixon and attended a city council meeting there and explained the specifics of the project, presented about the project, presented about PV solar technology in general, and received confirmation from the city after that, that the city does approve of the project moving forward. We also reached out to the Mabley Center to discuss the project, to explain the technology, and to talk specifically about the setback variance that Courtney mentioned briefly earlier. Um, and, uh, so we walked through questions they had about the project and received confirmation that they have now initiated the process, the state process for the state to approve of the, um, uh, of the waiver required for the setback variance.
Judge, may I approach the witness?
Sure. Thank you.
Really, I've handed you what I've marked as exhibit three for identification purposes. Are you familiar with this?
Yes.
And what is this?
This is an email sent from Tim Shipman to John Carson, who's the managing partner of Trajectory, copying, uh, myself, um, another colleague at Trajectory, and, uh, you, Courtney.
And Tip Shipman would be the building official, um, or head of zoning at the city of Dixon, is that correct?
Correct.
And could you just read the email that he sent on, well, let me back up, I'm sorry. What, when did he send this email?
He sent this email on August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, at approximately three thirty-one PM Central Time.
And could you just briefly read his email?
Yes, good afternoon. Yes, your statement is correct. I have had email or phone conversations with four of the five council members and all supported the project as you presented. The fifth member did not respond negatively. We just did not connect. If you would need anything further, let me know. Thanks.
Could you please describe the work that you've performed in connection with this project?
Yes, so, so far, we have performed a desktop analysis of the environmental characteristics of the site. We have negotiated a, and signed a site lease agreement with the Dixon Park District, negotiated and signed a memorandum of understanding with the Dixon Park District, whereby Trajectory has agreed to make a financial contribution or donation to the Park District in the event that the project does move forward and becomes operational. This would be in addition to the lease rental payments that we would be paying to the Park District, in accordance with the, with the lease agreement itself.
And have you, on behalf of the applicant, submitted an interconnection application with, with COMED?
Yes, we have.
And on behalf of the applicant here tonight, do you agree to be bound by any and all proposals and representations contained within the petition? What I'm going to refer as the application binder, and I'll show you what that is here in a bit, and then any testimony made under oath during this public hearing?
Yes.
And are you familiar with the applicant's petition for special use permit and variances?
Yes.
And did you assist in the preparation of that?
Yes.
Are you familiar with Lee County's ordinance regulating solar energy systems?
Yes.
Now, before I get to those specific ordinance requirements, I want to turn your attention to the general Lee County requirements um, regarding the issuance or criteria for the issuance of a special use permit. What, if anything, can you tell me about this project's effect on the character of the neighborhood?
So we expect this project to be a positive development in the neighborhood. We, um, agree to adhere to all applicable federal, state, and local regulations and laws. We, um, agree to keep the project clean and neat. We agree to, um, uh, operate the project in accordance with the Lee County ordinance as well, um, and promise overall to be a good neighbor.
Now, the, the leasehold area is actually supposed to be situated on tillable acres, is that correct?
Correct.
And so is it your testimony tonight that if this project is approved or cited, it will not take that land out of agricultural production? It will just take it out of row crop production?
Correct.
What benefits, if any, will this project bring to the local community?
So we're proposing a community solar project. Community solar projects allow local residents to subscribe to the projects, participate in clean energy development, and obtain direct benefits, namely through electricity bill savings. Um, and that's exactly what we're proposing here. So Dixon Park District will be able to participate, and, and local residents in and around Lee County will be able to participate.
And so is it a fair statement that those in proximity to the project could reap benefits from being in proximity to the project?
Correct, and Trajectory also agrees, or, or, um, agrees to, um, assist agrees to assist in educating the community and surrounding areas about the project and about the many benefits that the project does offer in terms of subscription and potential electricity bill savings.
And so you've mentioned that trajectory is committed to that, but the applicant would also commit to that in this case, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
What is the project's effect, if any, on the surrounding properties?
There's no anticipated negative effect on the surrounding properties.
Do you believe that the project will have any effect on local traffic conditions?
No. During the, the construction process for a project of this size is typically in the range of six to twelve months. And during that period, there is a peak construction period. That would be when traffic would be the heaviest. During the actual operation of the project, th- there is periodic annual maintenance with a pickup truck typically coming in to check on the project and perform maintenance here or there, but it's, it's, a project like this does not generate a lot of traffic.
Do you believe that the project will have any effect, positive or negative, on the local environment?
No negative or, or no negative effect.
Are you familiar with what's known as the ECOCAT consultation?
Yes.
And, and what is that?
So the ECOCAT is, it's testing me to remember exactly what the acronym stands for, but it's a consultation request that we submit to the Illinois Department of Natural Resources to determine if there are any records of threatened or endangered species on a particular project site that we designate or wetlands. And the IDNR then checks their databases and, and runs their analysis to see if, in fact, there are any records of that, and then they issue a determination. If there are no records indicating that, they will terminate consultation, and that's exactly what happened here.
And so you initiated the ECOCAT consultation, but that consultation was terminated?
Correct.
And so just, just to clarify too, it was terminated because there was no record of threatened or endangered species or protected natural resources within the leasehold area, is that correct?
Exactly. Correct.
Now, you testified earlier that, that the applicant will comply with all applicable rules, federal, state and local. Does the applicant intend to comply with the requirements set forth in the ordinance regulating solar energy systems?
Yes.
And does the applicant commit or intend to use industry best practices with respect to this project?
Yes.
I'm going to hold up a document. Let me know if you can't see it. It is titled Meadow Solar LLC. Five megawatt AC community solar project, Lee County, Illinois, application for special use permit and variances. Are you familiar with this document?
Yes.
And how so?
I prepared it.
And did you prepare this in anticipation of tonight's hearing?
Yes.
And this is what I'm going to refer to throughout the course of this hearing as the application binder. Is that fair?
Yes.
You can also, if you choose, refer to it as petitioner's number four.
Thank you. Mr. Elliott, did you arrange for thirty copies of this application binder to be delivered to the zoning office and in advance of tonight's hearing?
Yes.
And is it a fair statement that this application binder contains an introduction of the project site, but also how the project meets the ordinance requirements on solar energy systems?
Yes.
And within this application binder, the word shall is used frequently throughout, usually indicating that the proposed project meets the ordinance requirements. In those instances where the word shall is used, should that be interpreted as the applicant pledging and committing to be bound by those specific things?
Yes.
And is there a site plan included with this application binder?
Yes.
Is there an SES plan with the planned location and spacing of the panels?
Yes.
Did you include the planned location of the access roads and access points of this project?
Yes.
And are there any access roads?
Yes.
And is that seen on the north end of the site plan?
Correct.
Did you include the planned location, height and fencing materials of all fencing for this project in this application binder?
Yes.
What about the planned location of lines connecting the solar energy system to a building, substation or other electric load?
Yes, that's also on the north side.
What about the planned new electrical equipment other than at the existing building or substation that is to be the connection point for the SES?
Yes, that's on the site plan.
And does this application binder include the AMA weed control requirements?
Yes.
What about a landscaping plan?
Yes.
And have you submitted manufacturer specifications in this application binder?
Yes.
What about a detailed? Have you detailed the connection and interconnection details of this project?
Yes.
Is this project proposed to be located within five hundred feet of an airport or any approach zones of an airport?
No.
And, and since that's the case, was there a solar glare hazard analysis tool or SIGHAT required for this application binder?
No.
Have you provided a fire protection plan?
Yes.
Will the project be located, designed, constructed and operated so as to avoid and mitigate any impacts to wildlife?
Yes.
Does the applicant agree to enter into a road use agreement with the county and any impacted townships if necessary?
Yes.
Mr. Elliott, are you familiar with the consultation fund requirements in the ordinance regulating solar energy systems?
Yes.
And you understand that the Lee County engineer, Dave Anderson, sets that amount?
Yes.
And has Mr. Anderson set an amount with respect to this specific project?
Yes, he has.
And what amount would that be?
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
And do you agree to post the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars into the consulting fund as determined by the Lee County engineer?
Yes.
Does the applicant intend to enter into an agricultural impact mitigation agreement or what we refer to as AMA with the state of Illinois concerning this project?
Yes.
And by statute, the applicant, the applicant would be required to enter into that at least forty-five days prior to the commencement of construction, is that correct?
Yes.
And does the applicant intend to abide by the terms of that agreement?
Yes.
With respect to the ordinance provisions governing stormwater management, retention of topsoil and minimize disturbance to prime farmland, does the applicant agree to abide by all of those requirements as set forth in the ordinance?
Yes.
Does the applicant commit to repairing and restoring all drainage tiles damaged during construction and deconstruction of the project?
Yes.
Will there be any communication interference associated with the project?
No.
Does the applicant agree to abide by the operational standard conditions as set forth in the ordinance?
Yes.
How about the repowering provisions of the ordinance?
Yes.
And the decommissioning requirements as well?
Yes.
Does the applicant agree to carry general liability insurance as set forth in the ordinance?
Yes.
And have you provided any details in the application binder relating to the fencing for the project?
Yes.
And what does that fence look like?
The fence will be a chain link fence at least seven feet tall per National Electrical Code standards.
Will the fencing contain appropriate warning signs?
Yes.
Will the fence have appropriate warning signage that is in accordance with OSHA regulations?
Yes.
And will the sign at the entrance of the facility have the facility's nine-one-one address and a twenty-four hour emergency contact number?
Yes, it will.
And does the applicant intend to maintain the fence so as to prevent the growth of woody vegetation or noxious weeds along the fence?
Yes.
Now, with the exception of the variance requests relating to the Jack Mabley Development Center, does the project adhere to the setbacks requirements in the ordinance?
Yes.
Will Knox boxes and keys be provided at locked entrances for emergency personnel access?
Yes.
What is the maximum height of the panels proposed for this project?
Maximum height of twenty feet.
And will all systems, equipment and structures be twenty feet or less?
Yes.
And tell me about any proposed lighting at the site.
No, lighting is anticipated at the project site.
And if there's any lighting that should be utilized, will that be shielded and downcast?
Yes.
Will this project generate any noise?
The inverters and transformers generate a low humming noise that will be in compliance with the applicable noise standards in the ordinance and elsewhere.
Will there be any glare associated with this project?
No.
And will all solar collectors be placed in a manner such that any concentrated solar glare does not project onto any nearby structures?
Yes.
Will the solar panels be designed with anti-reflective coating to minimize glare?
Yes.
Should we expect these panels to generate heat?
No.
And will this affect any weather patterns in the area of this project?
No.
Does this project have any plans for outdoor storage?
No.
Have you submitted a weed and grass management plan with the application binder?
Yes.
What about a construction and operation plan?
Yes.
And have you also submitted a fire protection plan?
Yes.
The application binder provides that construction should or will take place in two thousand twenty-three. How long do you anticipate that process to take?
For a project of this size, we would anticipate between six months to twelve months, depending on weather conditions and supply chain availability.
And, and you anticipate that construction could start as early as two thousand twenty-three, but this depends on a, a variety of factors, is that correct?
Exactly, at the very earliest in, in two thousand twenty-three, but that would depend on interconnection issues lining up, all the other permits required for the project and of course us obtaining a state incentive award. All of those things would need to align.
Are there any particularly identifiable fire or explosion hazards associated with construction or operation of this project?
No.
And during construction, how will the applicant intend to gather and dispose of human waste?
Like many construction projects of, of this type, it would be portable toilets on the construction site.
Will there be any hazardous materials and quantities that trigger any regulatory requirements with respect to emissions or waste?
No.
And does the applicant commit to repairing or restoring all drainage tiles damaged during construction to the same or better condition as to when construction began?
Yes.
Will the project adhere to the construction times of no earlier than six AM and no later than nine PM?
Yes.
Let's talk about the two variance requests. The first, the setback variance with the Jack Mabley Development Center. Under the current ordinance, it requires that the project be set back four hundred feet from the foundation of an adjacent non-participating dwelling. What setback is the applicant proposing?
Approximately two hundred and twenty-five feet from the foundation of the Mabley Center to the system.
And why are you requesting this variance?
The size of the project requires that we have a certain number of panels on the project area and the, the project area identified by the Park District that they're open to leasing to us was this configuration. So in order for the project to fill out the design required for a project of this size, we would need to locate project panels on that southern finger of the project design.
And, and your words, would this be considered essential to the viability of the project?
Yes.
And have you discussed this variance request with the Mabley Center?
Yes, we have.
And, and what result, if any?
The Mabley Center, we, they had questions, we answered their questions and they confirmed that they approve of the project and have initiated the process of having the state issue a waiver in accordance with the setback variance requirement.
And are you asking the zoning board of appeals to condition this variance request on, on obtaining that waiver from the state?
Yes.
And directing your attention to the other variance requests that relates to the vegetative screening. Under the language of the ordinance, the applicant would have to screen around the, the entire six hundred and nine project parcel area, is that correct?
Correct.
And is that practical?
No, it's not. The project parcel, as you can see in the overview picture in the application, is, is quite large and it's an odd configuration or shape, much of which is wooded and has existing vegetative screening on it already. So no, it's not practical.
And so what vegetative screening is the applicant proposing? Would you mind going into detail on that?
Sure, so, and, and I'll refer you to the site plan in the documents. We are proposing particularly along the western side of the southern finger.
A real quick, Mr. Elliott, where, where can they find that site plan?
That should be, yeah, e- exactly. If, if you're looking in the, the short little deck, that will be the PowerPoint that I'll go through in just a moment. The site plan is the same site plan that's in the actual application. It should be on page six. So if, if you look at the, the southern finger there, the Mabley Center is on the southwest of that. We're proposing to screen that entire corner with vegetative screening, which I'll discuss when we get to my presentation, what that will look like. The entire western side of, of the site design here already has existing trees. It has existing vegetative screening, so, so that is, is covered. And then on the east side of the project, that's heavily wooded. So it also has existing vegetative screening. The north side of the project is where the access road is. We're proposing to leave that as is, with the idea that that will actually provide the community a place to look at the project and it will allow the Park District to show the project off to the public for, for whatever programs or educational programs they may decide to have about the project.
And have you had a discussion with the Park District relating to the plans on this northern side of the, the leasehold area?
Yes, yes, we have.
And, and what was the Park District's position?
They supported the, the idea of, of allowing it to, to stay open so that it would be an opportunity for the public to actually see the, see the project and, and how it works.
Would it be cost effective to require the applicant in this case to provide vegetative screening around the entire project parcel?
No.
So the, the purpose of the screening requirement is so that adjacent landowners cannot physically see the project, is that correct?
Correct.
And most landowners adjacent to this project parcel are over a thousand feet away, is that fair?
Correct.
And this would frustrate the purpose of the ordinance in your opinion, is that correct?
Yes.
Will there be any electromagnetic fields created by the operation of this project?
No.
And is the applicant contemplating the use of any battery storage in connection with this project?
No.
Is this project proposed to be located on US Department of Agriculture's prime farmland?
According to the Soil and Water District's Natural Resources Inventory Report that it released, the Lee, the Lee County version. A, a certain portion of it is, yes.
And when you say a certain portion, would that be twenty-five point eight percent of the parcel is comprised of prime farmland soils?
Yes.
And does the applicant have a plan in place to minimize any disturbance to the prime farmland, including establishing native plant species, ground cover as recommended by Lee County Soil and Water?
Yes, we plan to use that exactly.
And will any topsoil be removed from the site of this project?
We do not anticipate any topsoil to be removed to the extent it To the extent it is removed, uh we will follow the requirements of the Agricultural Impact Mitigation Agreement that we signed with the State Department of Agriculture.
And you testified earlier that there will not be any communication interference with this proposed project. Do you have any evidence that this project would not cause any communication interference?
We are not aware of any peer-reviewed or academic studies or reports that show solar projects um do cause problems with telecommunication equipment.
Now, if there was a complaint of any such interference, um does the applicant commit to responding and mitigating the same as required by the Lee County Ordinance?
Yes.
And if this petition for special use permits and variance requests were it was approved and the project was constructed and operated, would there be any effect on area employment in your mind?
Uh yes, we anticipate that this project would bring in over ten million dollars of investment as a whole, of which six million dollars would be union uh would be for labor and uh we are committed to using Illinois union labor.
Would the operation of this project create or cause any vibrations?
No.
What about during construction?
Um none, none anticipated, other than construction trucks actually coming to the site to unload and and haul equipment.
And installing the steel pilings, there may be some?
Yes, yes.
But that would be temporary, is that correct?
Correct, you're just during the construction period.
Would there be any particle emissions from this proposed project?
No.
What about during construction?
No.
Should we expect there to be any odor emanating from this project during operations?
No.
What about during construction?
No.
Would there be any heat created from the operation of this project?
No.
What about during construction?
No.
And would the construction or operation of this project involve the use of any explosive or particularly flammable materials?
No.
And is it correct that photovoltaics is integral to a SES?
Yes.
And if so, does the process of generation have any side effects on floral flora or fauna around it?
No.
And to the best of your knowledge, was a land evaluation score provided by the Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District?
Yes.
And was that land evaluation score for the entire project parcel seventy-four?
Yes.
And is there any evidence of how this proposed project would affect property values in its vicinity?
Yes, we commissioned a property evaluation report from the consultant firm Cohen Resnick that was a multi-state, multi-project evaluation across with projects across the US, many of which were approximately or similar size to the one we're proposing here. The conclusion of the report, and this is what Courtney's about to pass out, is that there's no evidence that the development and operation of solar projects has a negative impact on surrounding property values.
That is now. Let me get to my page, petitioner's number six, five, 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 five.
Yes, a variety of sizes. The first one is two hundred and seventy acres. And then it just goes down in size from there. The second one is a hundred and fifty-eight acres. The third is two oh four acres, one hundred and thirty-four acres for the next one, fifty acres for the next one, eighty-two acres for the next one, fifty-six acres for the next one, thirteen acres for the next one, thirteen acres for the one after that, and then twenty-eight acres after that.
And this this report generated by Cohen Resnick studied a solar farm known as the Grand Ridge Solar Farm in LaSalle County, Illinois, is that correct?
Correct.
I'm going to direct your attention back to the application binder that I showed you earlier. Where are the surface water drainage patterns and subsurface drainage tiles shown?
So those would be shown on the contour map, also known as the topography map, attached as an exhibit to or attached as a subexhibit to the omnibus exhibit known as the uh site plan of existing conditions.
Now, under the AMA, you'll be you're required to map the drainage patterns with GPS technology prior to the start of construction, is that correct?
Correct.
And you commit to doing so in this case as well?
Yes.
And and does the applicant commit to providing a more detailed drainage map prior to the issuance of any building permit if necessary?
Yes.
And uh in this application binder, did you note or show any existing pipelines and utilities?
Yes, the site plan itself shows the existing uh comm ed um electrical lines that run immediately north of the project area.
And are there any existing pipelines in this area or in the project area?
Not that we're aware of.
Now, it's my understanding that you have a PowerPoint presentation to present tonight, is that correct?
That's correct.
And I believe that's been marked as exhibit two for identification purposes. Um would you briefly go through that, please?
Well, I think now's a good time to break, though.
Okay.
Let's uh let's pick up again at eight thirty-eight. Eddie, use everybody.
Thanks.
Okay.
That's legal use for you may continue.
Okay, thank you. So I am going to run through some information, much of which we have talked about already. But it's an overview of the project. So if you flip to slide two. A little more information about the project. Trajectory is working with the Dixon Park District on a community solar project called Meadow Solar that promises to bring multiple benefits to both the park district and the surrounding community. The project is located on 24 acres on what is a much larger project near Meadows Park. It's currently the 24 acre area is currently being used for agriculture. This project will provide utility bill savings as a community solar project to families and organizations in the area, and it will provide rent payments and utility bill savings directly to the Dixon Park District. The solar project will also pay additional property taxes to the community. Jumping to slide three, a little more about the Illinois renewable energy laws, one of which was was passed just this past September. Over the past 20 years, the Illinois State Legislature has passed several laws to encourage and support renewable energy, including solar projects. These laws bring the benefits of a clean energy economy to residents and businesses across Illinois and will expand access to savings, clean energy and job benefits of solar power to more people. Different types of solar project which we've talked a little bit about already. So there's behind the meter projects. These you'll often see as rooftop systems that people put on their houses or their warehouses or their buildings. These typically power the building or the house itself. So there's that direct connection between the power being produced and the power being used. Community solar projects are a little different. They they give landowners who, for whatever reason, do not have an opportunity to install a rooftop behind the meter system. They they give them an opportunity to participate in a solar project by purchasing purchasing a subscription and participating in a clean energy project in that way. They're open to homeowners, businesses, organizations that again don't have an opportunity to install solar on their roof or on their property. Utility scale solar again is a third type. Those are larger systems like we talked about typically larger. They can sometimes cover hundreds, sometimes thousands of acres and are directly connected to the higher voltage transmission lines. Flipping to slide four. Little more about community solar, which again is is what we're proposing here for Meadow Solar LLC. Community solar opens up access to access to solar energy to residents, nonprofits, communities and public sector entities who, for whatever reason, can install solar on their property or the roof. They can those entities can participate in a community solar project and receive community solar credits on their utility bill for the energy produced by their share of the solar installation. So depending on the percentage that they subscribe to, they will benefit in accordance with that percentage. And this works through a essentially a credit on the utility bill that you receive. Slipping to flipping to slide five here, a little more about trajectory. Again, trajectory is an Illinois based company that focuses on bringing together landowners, electricity users, communities to develop solar projects with strong local buy-in and support. We have a deep background in solar development law, as I talked about financing policy and also community engagement. And we think that's what makes us a strong partner to work in communities like this with partners like the Dixon Park District. Two of our projects that recently became operational Rockford Solar is depicted here on the bottom left. This is a two megawatt project that we developed with the city of Rockford, who owns the property. We also worked with the Rockford Housing Authority in a broad group of community organizations that supported the project and helped that project move along through the development process. Gar Creek Solar is another project in Kankakee, Illinois that we developed with local community leaders leaders. And it's this one is located in a low income and environmental justice neighborhood. And it promises to bring solar savings to income, low income customers. Flipping to slide six. This again is the Meadow Solar site. A little more detail about this that that we haven't necessarily gone over yet. It is approximately 650 feet from Washington Avenue running north to south on the east side here to the solar system. There is a existing line of vegetative screening running north to south along the western side of the system. And on the east side of the project, there is a heavily forested area running from north to south that also serves as a vegetative screening for that side of the project. The access road is immediately north of the project running approximately east to west. And that runs along Cemetery Road. The Southern Finger, which we've talked about, is partially adjacent to the Mabley Center. And as we discussed, we're proposing a 225 foot setback from the foundation of the Mabley Center to the system. I'll flip to the next slide, slide seven. There are different types of ground mounted solar systems. Meadow Solar would be a ground mount system. There are single access tracker systems. That's what's featured on the picture to the left. And there are fixed tilt systems. Fixed tilt systems is is what that's what Meadows that we're proposing Meadow Solar to be. Those are exactly what they sound like. They do not tilt or rotate in accordance with the sun. They stay fixed. The picture on the right is a depiction of that. This particular project on the right was located on a type of ground that required a ballast system. So that's that. Those are the concrete pillars that you see here. Meadow Solar were also proposing to include native and pollinator friendly ground cover. And a picture of that, a nice picture of that is is located on on the on the bottom here with the with the wildflowers and stuff around the panels and and adjacent to the panels. Flipping to slide eight. Little more about setbacks and screening. We've covered this in depth, so I'll I'll go through it quickly here. The setbacks, we do follow the Lee County ordinance, except for the Mabley Center setback variance, which we've discussed. Outside of that, there are 30 foot setbacks from the solar panels to the parcel lines of adjacent non residential parcel lines and then 400 foot setbacks from residential homes. Screening for the project, we discussed that a little earlier as well. We are proposing Tallgrass Prairie in the setback areas that we have proposed. Flipping to slide nine, a little more detail and pictures about the screening and what that can sometimes look like. So we're proposing vegetative buffers, which are natural natural native Tallgrass Prairie species or mixes and and sometimes low growing trees and and shrubs, which will create a natural screening area along the fence near the Mabley Center boundary. And again, there's an existing there's an existing vegetative screen on the west side of the project running north to south. And then the the east side of the project is is heavily forested as it is. So those both are existing natural screens that the project already has. Next slide, slide 10. Why is the project located here? So there there are a number of reasons, but essentially four boils down to four. One, and this is key, the utility lines, the comm ed utility lines are located immediately adjacent to the project area that we're talking about. So not having to build out a long connection to a utility line that's located somewhere else is is key to to this project working. Land availability. We worked with the park district as we discussed to figure out whether this was going to be land that they were interested in leasing. We worked with them on identifying areas that they were not open to leasing because they wanted to develop those areas for for other programs and opportunities and and landed on this project site, which is big enough for what we proposed, but also aligns with their future development plans. The third reason is support from the the Dixon Park District, having their support and having their involvement in the community is key to getting a project like this fully developed. And of course, they're going to be the backbone of the of the local stakeholder support that we that we like to utilize when we develop community solar projects. And then the fourth reason is Lee County does have a zoning ordinance that allows solar development as long as you comply with the special use requirements set forth in the ordinance. And that's that's exactly what we've been going through here. And that's that's what we proposed. Flipping to slide 11, a little more detail about the community outreach and just touching on some of those dates. So we we've started talking with the park district actually as early as September 2021, those conversations continued through the spring and and summer of 2022, when we signed the lease agreement and the memorandum of understanding and the memorandum of lease with the park district. And the community engagement continued from there. On July 18th, we held the open house where we mailed the 180 180 neighboring landowners for the entire, what we're calling the project parcel, the larger 600 plus acre parcel. And including local officials. We also are we had we had over 30 or approximately 35 attendees at that particular event where we shared the introductory letter with our contact information, some information about trajectory, what we do, the types of projects we've worked on in the past. We also shared our frequently asked question document that provides some information about community solar projects, but also the technology behind the projects, including the photovoltaic or PV panels. And then we gave an overall presentation about the project itself, including the site plan, proposed screening and proposed setbacks. And then, as I discussed, we also gave a presentation to the Dixon City Council and answered a number of questions they had about the project and ultimately received a confirmation from the from the city council representatives that the city does approve in support of the project moving forward in the development process. The next slide here is a little more detail about community solar benefits and the particular benefits, including economic benefits that this solar project promises to provide. Under Illinois law, community solar projects contribute to local property taxes, even if the land in this, like in this situation, is owned by public sector entity. These taxes are paid by the solar project directly. Estimated year one property taxes for this particular project at the size we're proposing five megawatts AC is approximately $30,000. Over the life of the solar project, Meadow Solar will pay over 630,000 to local government entities as part of the property taxes. Utility bill savings is another thing we've talked about that's that's tied in with community solar benefits. A five megawatt AC project like this that's fixed tilt would produce approximately 10 million kilowatt hours of community solar credits per year, which is worth approximately $200,000 in utility bill savings per year for the park district and other local subscribers who, as we discussed, will have an opportunity to subscribe and participate in these electricity bill savings. Trajectory, as I committed to earlier, will work with local trajectory and the applicant will work with local governments and organizations in Dixon to educate folks about about this subscription opportunity and and make sure that they're aware that they do have an opportunity to purchase or participate in the subscription process for this particular project. Terms of job creation, we talked about this as well. A project of this size in this particular location will include an overall investment of over $10 million with over 6 million of that in labor cost. And this project, we are committed to building with Illinois Union Labor. Little more about decommissioning of the solar projects. And I understand the ZBA is is pretty familiar with the agricultural impact mitigation agreement, but I'll give an overview again, just for the record. Under state Illinois law, community solar projects are required to sign an agricultural impact mitigation agreement when they're proposing to develop a solar project on what is currently agricultural land in the state. We we signed those agreements with the State Department of Agriculture at some point prior to receiving a building permit, as Courtney explained, 45 days prior to starting construction. This will include a detailed final decommissioning plan for the end of the project. And it will require a bond to be placed with Lee County to confirm that there are funds in place to to handle the decommissioning of the project. Key steps as part of this decommissioning or deconstruction of of this of the solar project include removal of modules, racking piles, removal of cabling trays, electrical equipment. If there are any concrete pads or foundations and debris, that's removed as well. Site stabilization also, including placing soil and reseating as necessary. And then, of course, the removal and disposal of all the materials used, sometimes recycling, and then removal of landscape materials as applicable. So that that's all I have for my presentation. I will pause here and and thank you again for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Follow.
No, Judge.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Elliott, let's start going around the horn, Mr. Bunstra? Ms. Hinkle? Ms. Duffy? Mr. Forster?
You. Yes. Multiple. Um. Got to get closer to this. First one, what's the projected term of the project?
What's the light? 25 year initial term with two optional five year renewal unilateral renewal periods, so a maximum of 35 years.
Okay. Um. Relative to the city's position, you got that email from Mr. Shipman. However, it appears the council has not actually taken any official action on that. He's just he just pulled the reaction. Am I correct? He just pulled the reaction of the officials, but the city has not taken an official position on that, right?
That's my understanding, correct?
Um. How many residences or businesses will this project, the the five megawatt project serve?
It totally depends on the percentage that a particular resident or business decides to subscribe to. So it's possible that that it could be many, many people and many, many businesses if people describe subscribe to smaller percentages because that would be more to go around. But of course, that that number starts to shrink as people get higher percentages.
How do how does one determine the percentage on a subscription like that? Or I mean, how does how does one get a particular percentage?
It's part of the process. When you sign up for the project, you decide it. Part of the process is you provide your utility bill and they look and see how much electricity your house or your building or whatever it is actually uses on a monthly basis and on a yearly basis. And then there are typically several options that they'll give you in terms of the percentage that it would make sense for you to subscribe to.
Okay. Um. Setbacks. And I think this is just a bit of a clarification. Excuse me, I'm kind of for the equipment setbacks. And I think you may have clarified this in the slide, but in under the design standards setbacks section F. It says it indicates a minimum of 400 feet from the property line of any platted subdivision. It does not appear in there that you in that there's any indication of primary residences and maybe every maybe every one of the properties is in a platted subdivision that's adjacent to it, but there's also a a minimum of 400 feet from the foundation of any nonparticipating primary dwelling. That's not noted in the application is getting back to my supposition. Is that because all the adjacent properties are part of a splatted subdivision?
Not necessarily. To the extent it's not noted in the application, it is noted in the presentation that I just gave. And it that has now been admitted into evidence. So that's the intent is that we comply with all of the setback requirements required by the ordinance, except for the setback variance, which we're proposing with respect to the Mabley Center.
And that's that's why I was saying, I think it was kind of clarified there, but I just wanted to, because it was omitted from the application person part, I just wanted to clarify.
Sure.
Um. The DNI letter indicates, let me get to it. Indicates, uh, let me get to it. Exhibit E. There we go. In the. It indicates, this should not be regarded as a final statement on the site being considered, or. Nor should it be a substitute for detailed site surveys or field surveys required for environmental assessments. Do you plan on doing any additional environmental assessments?
Yes, at the very least, we will do a wetland delineation. Prior to moving to the next phase of uh, engineered construction drawings to determine. With specificity whether and where any such wetlands would be located.
Okay, what about um? Some of the um. Plants and more particularly some of the um. Birds and animals that were indicated that might be in the area, but were not specifically noted. Do you intend to do an additional um? Bird and animal um, assessment?
To the extent that's something that Lee County requires us to do, yes.
I'm just thinking in terms of what the Department of Natural Resources is indicated.
My understanding is that. The Eco Cat is the first threshold to determining whether an additional survey for uh, flora fauna would be required. If there is an indication that there may be animals out there, that's something that the IDNR will let you know as part of the Eco Cat process. And when they terminate consultation, that's, that's. One way of interpreting that is, is that's their way of saying no additional analysis is necessary. Now, th- there is that, that fine print language at the end there.
Okay.
Sure. So to the extent the IDNR requests us to do additional surveys or studies of, of wildlife, then yes, we will. We will comply with that requirement.
Okay, but you're not, other than the wetlands, you're not planning on doing any, any additional of your own?
No.
Any particular reason for going with the fixed versus the tracking?
So tracker systems are typically more productive, because they do track the sun over the course of the day, but they also require more space. For a site or, or for a space constrained site like this, where you have trees on both sides, you have the Mabley Center on the, on the southern side. And you have the access road immediately north, there's only so much room. So our, our internal design team concluded that the way to optimize productivity while also making sure. That there's enough room for the panels is to do a fixed tilt system, and that's where they landed on this.
Okay, okay, um. Why that finger is compared to. Squaring it off a little bit, I, I, I think you partially answered in the presentation, because you said that the um, Park District. Recommended this particular land, and yet there is a. It goes right around a section that seem, would seem appropriate and keep you back from the Mabley Center.
Exactly, and, and um, I was just walking this with a, uh, with a, a Park District representative earlier today to, to look at this specific area. You're right, that the area that is excluded from the project design. That's currently west of that finger.
Yeah.
Um, that is the area that the Park District is planning to develop as an aquatic center at some point in the future. So that's the area that they said they did not, they were not open to leasing. Which is why we, we had to use the, the southern finger that runs adjacent to the Mabley Center.
Okay, um, additionally with the fence, um, you were talking about. In regards to the National Electric Code. Um, and you said it was seven foot. I know that in previous presentations, we've heard that. National Electric Code reference six foot of um. The cyclone type fence with a, with another foot of barbed wire on top. I guess my question is, are you just doing the straight? Are you doing strictly seven foot of cyclone, or are you actually putting, are you, is that last foot of, of barbed wire?
We're not anticipating using barbed wire.
Okay, okay. What will be the, you indicate you're not going to exceed twenty feet. What are you anticipating being the tallest piece of equipment? Outside of those connections and the, and the. Direct connections.
Outside of the utility poles and the electrical lines, the panels themselves are typically in the range of thirteen to fifteen feet. I, we, we typically use twenty foot as a maximum primarily for tracker systems, because when those are at maximum tilt. They can sometimes be more than fifteen feet, so we, we say twenty feet just to, to be conservative. But for a fixed tilt system, the uh, the panels themselves outside of the utility poles will be the tallest point of that, will be the, the tallest point of the system.
And you're figuring probably not more than thirteen or fifteen feet?
Approximately, yes.
Okay.
It, it will depend on the exact panels that are selected. Um, once you get to the engineering and, and equipment procurement's uh, stage of the project, but we, we don't anticipate anything more than that.
Okay, based on what you provided as the expected equipment. The height would be fifteen feet or less?
Correct.
And I think I need a little clarification. On. Your concerns on the visual screening. Cause as I understand, the vegetative screening. Is to be. On the leased property. Adjacent to the non-participating.
Just trying to ask a question.
Well, I'm, I'm just.
Is that correct?
Okay, um. Are you? Are you just leasing the twenty-four acre, you're just leasing the twenty-four acres?
Correct.
So when we're talking about leased property, that would just be relative to the twenty-four acres, correct?
Correct.
Then you shouldn't have a concern about the larger. Six hundred and some acres, or why would you have concern about the larger? Project size um, of six hundred and some acres?
To the extent that provision in the ordinance could be interpreted to require us to provide screening to residences. Located adjacent to the larger six hundred and seven or six hundred and nine acre parcel. Then that's what we would have a problem with. So some of those properties would potentially be actually across the river, so. That's just an example of, of how we found that to be both impractical and in undue hardship.
If I, if I may interrupt, this is the reason I suggested these terms.
Yeah.
The Lee, Lee County ordinance describes screening requirements for the project parcel. The parcel on which this twenty-four acre sits is only got one number, and it's for six hundred and ten acres. So if you're really, if you want to interpret it one way, you'd say it's a, it's a project parcel of six hundred and ten acres, but they're only. Developing twenty-four. That's what he's, that's why I suggested the terms project. Parcel versus leasehold area.
Which is specifically why I was asking the question, because in the code. It says the visual screen will be installed on the property being leased by the SES. Immediately adjacent to the property line. So.
Let's see somewhere else something about project parcel.
I have no problem with you answering it right now.
So that provision's only under platted subdivisions. If you look where it says adjacent non-participating dwellings, it doesn't make that. That distinction.
Yes, it does. The owner of any adjacent non-participating dwelling. At its discretion may request a visual screen be designed, installed, maintained, and ultimately removed. And then it goes on to say, if the option is chosen, the visual screen will be installed on the property being leased by the SES. Immediately adjacent to the property line. It doesn't talk about dealing with the project size, it talks about.
Somewhere it talks about project parcel, honest to God it does. But, but that's why we encourage the use of it.
Okay, um, that's. Think that's it then.
Good, um. In order of seniority, let's see, Mr. Pratt.
So I got a couple of legal questions to start with, and I'm not a lawyer by any means, so. These are probably stupid questions. Your petition states that it's the second amended petition. Explain that, what's the, where's the first one? How, what's the second one mean? He's an attorney too.
So the, we amended the petition, if I remember correctly. I, I don't recall why we amended the petition, so I'm going to defer to Courtney on that.
If you compare the petitions, the last second amendment adds variations.
That, yeah, that's the short answer.
But we never saw the first one, correct?
Well, I don't know if you did or not, but.
Okay.
Correct, the, the application provides the most recent one that we filed, the second amended.
You filed a first amendment one.
Correct.
Okay, okay, so the second one. You're requesting a variance on the setbacks. Uh, contingent on the fact that you'll get a waiver from the owner. Why do you need a variance once you have a waiver?
My understanding is that is a component of the ordinance itself. Is actually obtaining a waiver is one option.
Right, so why are we giving you a variance if you're going to obtain a waiver?
Um. My understanding is that the Lee County ordinance is structured in a way that still requires the Lee County. Zoning Board of Appeals to grant a waiver. As a secondary threshold to getting the setback variance, the first threshold being the waiver itself. I apologize, I, I know that was a legalese answer that may have been more confusing.
Well, we'll talk about that. So that's my legal questions. So you talked about the city hasn't made a determination or voted on this, will it, at some point?
I don't know what the city's process is, but I. Know that we have a. Confirmation from city representatives that they support the development of the project. I don't know if they will take an official vote or not.
Have you done a field tile survey?
Not yet, that's something we would do prior to construction.
Data construction will commence at six o'clock and end at six o'clock in the morning and at nine in the evening. You didn't say what days, every day, Sunday included?
Um, we will comply with, it, it's, it's not for sure at this point, but we will comply with whatever the requirement is. If, if the requirement is that we only work weekdays, then, then we'll comply with that.
So on the uh, soils. Of the property. I think you stated that twenty-five percent of it was Class A soils.
Approximately twenty-five percent. Or it was prime farmland according to the Lee County Soil and Water Natural Resources Inventory Report.
Do you know what the productivity index is on the?
Yes, it's, it's one oh six.
On the twenty-four acre?
On the overall project parcel.
On the project parcel, do you know what it is on the leased landhold?
I, I do not, no.
I have a pretty good idea what it is. Okay, that's my questions.
All right, uh, Mr. Meyer.
My question is on the financing of the community project. Is it completely financed then by the subscription?
No. No, that, that's only a portion of it.
How is the other portion financed?
It's a renewable energy credit or certificate award that comes from the Illinois Power Agency. So as part, the next step of the process, if we obtain a zoning permit from, from Lee County. We will, part of what's required to submit this project to the state to obtain one of those awards. Is a uh, SUP permit. So that, that will be the next stage is to get the SUP permit, we have the signed lease, we have the interconnection component we need. And then we'll submit it to the Ill- Illinois Power Agency, where they will consider our application and a number of other applications and decide which. Projects get the award and which don't.
It would be almost all financed by the award and by subscription?
Um. Most likely, yes, yes.
Would the award be more than half of it? Half of the financing?
Um, yes.
That's all I am.
Mr. Shonols. Or if you're from Amboy, I understand it's Shinos.
Uh, Shonols.
We were talking before you got here, there's probably a different pronunciation in Amboy.
Okay.
So I, I was curious about uh, your subscribe, like, do you currently have subscribers and what process do you have to facilitate?
Subscribers, we do, we, we, it, it's, so it's not us necessarily that has the subscribers, it's the particular project company. In question that has the subscriber, so the projects that we develop, we have since sold to. Other companies that own and operate the projects, um, Rockford Solar LLC is an example. Uh, it's an educational process that we, trajectory does stay involved in to. Explain kind of how community solar works to people in the area. Um, it could be people in the broader area as well, and then, and just let them know about the opportunity, then explain. The, the sign up and subscription process and uh, help them kind of get the paperwork started.
Okay, so trajectory takes like an educational role?
Yeah, very much so. Depending on the particular project, sometimes we will stay involved in. In essentially facilitating the subscription signup process, if that makes sense.
Oh, and who actually facilitates your subscribers and maintains like the energy credits that go. To each subscriber?
John Holes. You're brand new to this, these microphones almost have to be swallowed, they are, they are, they're just.
I'm doing it too, they're just, you gotta, you gotta correctly get your lips touching it, it's really hard, in fact, you probably gotta move your laptop.
Oh.
It, it's that, they're that tough to deal with, and the problem is then the people on Zoom can't hear you, that's the other.
Okay, you can move the mic as well.
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, you can move right towards you.
All right, I'm just checking.
Yep, there you go.
Um, but, so you're explaining uh, who? How, how, my question was, how does uh? Who facilitates the process of um, lining up subscribers? And uh, facilitating the. Solar credits that are generated at the site to a subscriber's electric bill?
That is typically the utility that does that piece of it. So in this instance, this is a comm ed project, that would be comm ed that determines. Okay, this person is, their meter is running at a certain amount, and we see that they have a. They're subscribed to a certain percentage of the project, so we're going to allocate a certain amount of power that came from Meadows Solar LLC as an example. To that person's electricity bill, because they have an X percentage of subscription that they've signed up for.
Okay. Um. As far as interconnectivity, um. Can you explain a little bit about the process um, and how you plan to get connected to the grid? Do you know if the substation needs upgrades before you can? Can get interconnected?
So that's, that's two questions, just ask one of them.
I'm sorry.
It's, it's, it's hard to ask questions, it really is.
So taking the, the um, the first question. We do know about the interconnection process, the, the, so the first step that we typically take is submitting a, what's called a pre-application report. is submitting a, what's called a pre-application report to the given utility, whether it's Amren or Comm Ed, here it's Comm Ed. That identifies the project location, um, often identifies the particular, um, interconnection infrastructure that we're looking at, so the particular distribution lines that are adjacent to the project site. And then, and then Comm Ed will take what's essentially a preliminary look at that particular circuit at that location and give us an idea of how much capacity is, is available on that line. And, um, sometimes the approximate cost of that, that they're anticipating of interconnecting at that line, and then some of the more detailed. Technical specifications of what an interconnection at that line would actually look like. So that's the first piece. Um, if that looks promising enough to us, we will move forward in the interconnection process. Broadly speaking, the next step of which is submitting an interconnection agreement to Comm Ed. So that's something that we populate with information about the site, about the project company. Here would be Meadows Solar LLC, um, and then send that to the utility. And, uh, the utility, of course, would need to countersign that agreement. And there are various obligations associated with that agreement or that come out of that agreement. One of which is often. The utility here, Comm Ed, agreeing to do a more robust study of the particular project on that particular circuit and determine with specificity and more certainty. Um, the potential interconnection cost that we would have to pay to interconnect the project to that particular circuit. And again, what the engineering specifications would look like. Um, the location of the proposed interconnection, whether the utility thinks that our proposed location would work. Sometimes they propose alternative locations. Um, so that's the next step. And then the, the final step is typically us signing a, a final interconnection agreement with the utility saying that we are going to interconnect at a particular location for a particular project. Um, for a, uh, a, a cost amount that is specified in the agreement. And remind me of the second question?
I think you answered.
Okay.
Both questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. That's all I have.
Okay, uh, how about you, Mr. Burrow, any questions? Is he still on, I can't see. Craig Burrow, can you hear me, do you have any questions? Okay, all right. Craig, can you hear me? If you, if you can hear me and want to ask a question, unmute yourself, otherwise. You don't have to. His ending, yeah. Questions?
I was pounding six, no judge, everything's been answered well by the, uh.
Okay, very good. All right, um, interested parties in the courtroom, questions of Mr. Elliott. Seeing none, how about on Zoom, if you have a question of Mr. Elliott? Would you, uh, do that thing where you go to participants and then click raise hand? I can't see, so somebody's got to tell me. Okay, I have a few, I hope I can make mine concise. Is, is, uh, Mr. Elliott, is there a presently an engineering certificate that the foundation and design of the solar panels is within accepted professional standards?
No.
Will you have that?
Yes.
Um. I think you answered the question, but will you comply, will, will Meadows Solar comply with any applicable state and federal regulatory standards?
Yes.
Will security cameras be anywhere on site, either temporarily or permanently?
We don't anticipate using security cameras unless required.
Will any SES component be within 75 feet of the right of way of any state road?
No.
Which brings up another question, um. Cemetery, is cemetery road, to your knowledge, if you know, is cemetery road? A township road, a municipal road, a state road, or a federal road?
To my own knowledge, no.
You know what form of byway it is? No, let, let him, let him answer.
I, I don't know.
Okay, thanks. Um, gravel access, uh, for the park district. I'm sorry. Is the proposed boundary fence within three feet of any adjoining non-participating property owner's property line?
No.
Uh. As to the community meeting on July 18th, did you notify all Lee County Board members, the Dixon Township Board? Members and, and the zoning department, the Lee County zoning department staff?
Yes.
Can you, can you help me out and, uh, point out where the landscaping plan is in your application? If you can find it real quick.
So it's a combination of, um, the information that I presented in the slide deck on what the proposed vegetative screening would look like. And then it's also highlighting on the site plan itself where the existing vegetative screening already is on the west side and on the east side of the.
Okay, thank you.
Of the leasehold area.
Was the Eco Cat, does the Eco Cat consultation review, um, um, look for historic sites as well as National Heritage Database, um, flora and fauna?
No, my understanding is that the Eco Cat covers threatened and endangered species and wetlands.
Did, do, if you know, was any review done by ID, IDNR, which now takes care of historic sites, by the way, um, to locate if there was any historic sites in the leasehold area?
Not to my knowledge.
Has a stormwater management plan been developed?
Not yet.
And will Meadows Solar do so?
Yes.
If there would be drainage tile damage, within what timeframe would Meadows Solar repair that damage?
Within 12 months per the agricultural impact mitigation agreement that we would sign with the State Department of Agriculture.
Do you have any evidence that the proposed project would not cause any communication interference?
We have no evidence showing that it would not, but we're also not aware of any peer reviewed or academic studies showing that it would interfere with it.
Oh. Oh, was the lease score or the, uh, the project parcel or the leasehold area?
Project parcel.
Okay, and that was 74 years in.
Yes, my understanding was actually the land evaluation, and we're still waiting on the site assessment piece.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions I have. Any follow up, Ms. Kennedy?
Um, just briefly, Judge, with the community meeting, did you also notify all adjacent landowners within a thousand feet of the project parcel?
Yes.
I have nothing further.
Give me a step down, thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, well, unless you think you can get something done in 10 minutes.
I could get through his testimony.
How about going around the horn though? Probably not. Okay, um, let's call it an evening then, and let's recess until Wednesday, the 7th at. Is anybody interested in six, ZBA members interested in six o'clock or not? I think I asked this once and got almost an insurrection, but.
No, no.
Okay, seven o'clock on the 7th. And we're, we're, we're in recess.